The Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop for Monday, October 8th. First we'll have a roll call by City Manager Melinda Coleman.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Jean?
Here.
Councilmember Abrams?
Here.
Mayor Slawick?
Here.
And note that Councilmember Smith will not be here tonight, he's out of town on business.
Thank you. Approval of agenda?
It's been moved approval of the agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Abrams and seconded by Juneman, approval of agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, the agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business, so tonight for new business, we have four things. We have the commission and board interview. We have the follow-up review of the urban agricultural ordinance agreements. We have our tree, you know, I don't have my glasses on, so.
Tree rebates and sales.
Tree rebates and sales for private land. And our rental housing licensing discussion. So, busy agenda. So, City Manager Coleman, do you want to talk about the first one?
Sure, thank you Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. We have an opening on our community design review board. And we are very fortunate to have a resident who kind of pays attention to what we're doing and submitted an application to serve on the design review board. That person is Bruce Thompson. He is a longtime county, Ramsey County employee. We've had a lot of good working relationships with Bruce and I think it'll be really nice to have a chat with him tonight. So, Mayor and council, it is your duty to interview Mr. Thompson and then at the council meeting, we will actually take a vote to appoint.
Thank you. And councilmembers, have you had a chance to look at the questions? There are 10 questions. Typically, we each, we each ask two in this case. Anybody?
I would like to do six and seven together, actually.
Six and seven, Councilmember Juneman?
Number one.
Number one. Councilmember Abrams?
Number eight.
Eight. Councilmember Jean?
Do nine, 10, two?
Two, okay. Well, two's pretty easy, but, okay. That sounds good. So, with that, I think we have Mr. Thompson come up, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, if you'd like to just introduce yourself to us and...
Good evening, I'm Bruce Thompson. I am a resident of Maplewood, in the southern leg of Maplewood, over by the ski jump at 16, or excuse me, at 1132 Marnie Court.
Excellent, welcome. And I'm not going to taint this, but I just want to say, we lived on the same cul-de-sac. And so, we had two boys that were the same age and there were a lot of things that happened, you know, cul-de-sacs would happen, so, a lot of fun. But now they're all grown up, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, glad you're here. We will start with Councilmember Abrams.
Mayor?
First question. Why are you interested in serving on the community design review board?
Somehow I anticipated this question. I'm at a point in my life, I recently retired from Ramsey County, and so, I've had a point in my life, once again, where I've got the opportunity to spend the time to give back to the community, get a chance to work on some of the projects that are going on around the community, and to represent my neighbors and Maplewood as a whole. My past job with Ramsey County, I've got 22 years' worth of experience in real estate, building design, construction, so I understand the kind of things that come up at the design review board. And so, those are things that I'm still interested in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jean?
Thank you Mayor, and thank you again, Mr. Thompson. This question, are you available on Tuesday evenings for the community design review board meeting?
Tuesday evenings, I am available, yes.
Good. So, I am actually going to take three, because there's three questions. The first one, can you read construction plans, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. So, that's an easy one. Number four is, what is your experience in analyzing design or architectural elements for compatibility with surrounding buildings, cost to the building owner, functionality, and maintenance?
Sure. I think in my application, you see that I was also on the design review board for a couple of years back in the 80s, late, I think, middle 80s. But in my position with Ramsey County, that's exactly what we did in my office, was we looked at design plans for functionality with the departments. We looked at the design plans for aesthetics and how they looked, not just for that particular building, but how they fit in with the community, the surrounding buildings that they were in. We looked, in many cases, for the kinds of building materials that were durable and long-lasting. And I think that's something that's important to the city of Maplewood as well, and so...
Excellent. Sounds like you have experiences with that. And then one more, do you have any experience in signage design and/or ordinance development regarding signage?
Let's see. The experience I have is, when I was previously on the design review board, but also in Ramsey County, when we would build a building, one of the things we always had to do was create signage for the building. While I didn't do it personally, we had architects that we worked with that would design the signage, but the departments that we worked with and many times, the members of the county board had an interest in what that signage looked like. And so, I do have experience with things like that.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Juneman.
Good evening. What is your experience and knowledge base regarding different types of landscaping techniques?
Landscaping techniques, similar response in my work with Ramsey County. When we would design buildings, landscaping was always a key component of those buildings. I'll give you an example, we did the Public Works facility out in Arden Hills, and one of the things that we worked very closely with Arden Hills on is, they wanted a lot more trees on that particular piece of land. And so, we doubled the number of trees that the city originally wanted to have, just because we had access to the trees from the Ramsey County Workhouse. And so, you know, I've got experience in taking a look at landscaping plans and trying to figure out ways that we can enhance them.
And this is related. What is your experience and knowledge base regarding plantings with regard to their ease of maintenance, resistance to disease, longevity, compatibility with other plants, expected growth rates, and expected longevity?
Well, Councilmember, my personal experience with those is very small, but I do have been able to rely on experts in that area, landscape architects, who have that knowledge. And many times, what we would ask them for, as they were designing landscaping, were those kinds of things, or components of those things, because those were important because of a particular location we had.
Next, we have Councilmember Abrams.
This is going to be a fascinating question. Are you familiar with new techniques for reducing the amount of impervious surfaces?
Mr. Thompson?
Is there more to it, is that it? That's it?
Yes.
Yes, I am. We, when I was with Ramsey County, we built a number of facilities that had underground holding tanks, as well as filtration, sediment ponds, things like that, and so, I am familiar with them.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Jean, you have the last two?
Thank you Mayor. In your opinion, what are some of the best and worst designed projects within the city limits?
Ooh, good question. Well, let's see, I'll tell you, I certainly think the city hall and the city hall campus here is a good example. One of the things that I did with Ramsey County was, we built the suburban court facility, thanks to you for donating the land. I think that's an excellent example of a facility that fit well in the existing community. I think another good example is the St. John's Hospital and that campus over there, and the way that's expanded, and the durable materials that you see on a building like that. The fact that, I think color-wise, the entire campus goes together very well.
Thank you. And the last... And the last question is, what areas of Maplewood do you think the city should consider for possible redevelopment?
Let's see, how about downtown Maplewood?
Well, when you find it, will you let us know?
Specific areas, I think, would probably be along that Frost Avenue. I think there's some excellent opportunities there. I think continued development on Beam Avenue, although it's close to being full, as things begin changing and turning over, I think it's important that those areas, because they're such a, the spotlight sort of shines on them for Maplewood, I think those are areas that are important.
Good, counsel, good job, Mr. Thompson, nicely done. Next, the process, as the city manager laid out, is we'll be voting on that, and then we'll vote during the council meeting, but don't feel like you have to say, if you have, you can watch it on TV, if you would like to do that, but we will be deciding tonight. City Manager Coleman, anything else?
Yes, and then, assuming that you get appointed, then staff will be reaching out to you about how you get the packet and orientation for serving on the design review board.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
I could think, any questions about whether I may or may not have been at a party in high school?
No, no, no. Or if you like beer?
Great, thank you very much, everyone.
We don't dig that far here.
Yes. Okay, let's see. And next, if everybody wants to hand in their ballots.
Can you put your name on it? Put your name on it?
Did you, did everybody? Lifetime appointment? No, four years, right? Okay, we have to stop with that, right?
Actually, the appointment, let me just check that. 19, yeah. It's just filling in a vacant term, but then he could be open for reappointment, just like we're doing at the council meeting.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have the follow, well, right, a follow-up review of urban agriculture ordinance amendments. Council, City Manager Coleman?
Thank you Mayor Slawick, members of the city council. Last summer, when we approved several ordinance amendments related to urban agriculture, council recommended that we look at the six months later to see how things are going. And what I can tell you is that there's not a lot of activity. We have had six chicken permits and one that's in process, but much less activity when it comes to sort of the urban crops and the beekeeping, goats and sheep, that kind of thing. We haven't really seen a lot of activity on that. I suspect that as word gets out, next summer and spring, we'll see more. So, we might want to consider bringing it back in a year to see how things are going. But with that, I'll let Mr. Swanson give you the actual update on how things are going.
Mr. Swanson, welcome.
Mayor and council, thanks for having me here. As Manager Coleman said, just a brief update on the urban ag, that was actually approved June 11th of this year. We've had seven chicken permits come in since then, six have been approved, one is currently pending and it will probably be approved, because I've talked to some of the neighbors already. Of those, three of those actually would not have been approved with the previous 100%, but we have not had any issues with that since then. I think most of those even had a small number of chickens. We had one goat application. I would not say it was a, she wants goats sometime soon, I just think she wanted to be the first one to get it in there and start the discussion, so, we will actually be bringing the fee for that permit to you later on in the year.
Mr. Swanson, I actually had a question about the poultry permits. It said there's 42 poultry permits with 309 poultry throughout the city, so 42 residents have poultry, and then you actually count the number of chickens?
Mayor and council, we have 42 permits that are currently out there, and every single chicken is also provided a band, so we're able to count the number of bands that people have. So, we know we have 309 chickens, our poultry, out there.
That's actually good to know and to understand that.
So, if your chicken runs away, you see, we can say we have number 10.
Yep.
You cannot sneak in other chickens at this, or you could, but they wouldn't have a band, right?
Right.
Mayor and council, the bands do come off, so if chickens are taken, they can also be, new chickens can replace them, and the bands can be replaced on that new animal.
Thank you.
And Mayor and council, we do have a couple residents that have bees. We have not had any issues. That was something that we already knew that residents were keeping. This is just to provide a little bit more direction to those residents. We do actually have one church, Lakeview Lutheran Church, that actually started a community garden at the site, previously before the new urban update. They actually would have been required to come in for a CUP, so that would have been a $1,500 fee that would have been charged to them. This, basically, they will just do it. I've been by there. It's a very nice little spot. We've not had any issues, so, really good things there. We've had a couple direct-to-consumer sales of some farm sands. There is, I think, a peach trailer over off of County Road C that was there for a couple weeks when, sort of the height of that season. And then there's some corn that was being sold off of Hazelwood. And sort of a final little tidbit that came in since then, is we are actually partnering with Ramsey County to do a community food assessment. So, the Ramsey County Department of Health is actually providing somebody to look at Maplewood's food access, and that will provide a report later on this year. The E and R is actually currently reviewing that, and it will come to the council earlier in 2019. So, at that, pretty quick overview of what we've seen the last couple of months, and let's open up to any questions.
Councilmember Juneman, and then Abrams?
I have a bee question, because I think there were, at one time, several people that, we had a couple in our neighborhood. If people are still keeping bees, as long as they're not bothering anybody, there's nothing that we need to do about it, right?
Mayor and council, unless there's a nuisance issue, the bees are fine. I know, actually, there's quite a number of people in your neighborhood that have bees. Interestingly enough, a lot of time, the people that have bees also have chickens and a lot of other urban things, so I can tell you, I've been to most of those, at least the ones that I know of, their houses, so it's pretty cool.
Councilmember Abrams?
I sent an email asking about the urban farm comment in the staff report. And just so the council knows, maybe you can comment on that, just a point of clarification, because it was unclear in the staff report. Minnesota Food Association may be partnering with Maplewood. They are no longer partnering with us. Can you maybe give us an update on that?
Yes, Mayor and council, the Minnesota Food Association was partnering with the city of Maplewood to do a three-acre park in Hazelwood Park? Harvester Park, my apologies. That actually ended up falling through, based on, I think, funding. That said, we have tilled that property. We are still looking for partners for maybe a community garden in that area in the future. So, if you hear of anyone who has any interest, please put them in contact with us.
City Manager Coleman?
Thank you Mayor Slawick. Chris, I was just going to mention that I'm on the Y Community Board, and they are getting into gardening, community gardens, so maybe I could bring that to them and see if they're interested in expanding to that location, but they are starting to open that up at the Y and White Bear, so they might be looking for an opportunity.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Good report. I think we would like to hear in a year, maybe as progress happens and...
The goats have taken over.
Yeah, if there's more goats and things like that. But, we're glad to hear it's going smoothly, and it is interesting to have an update and for us to be, you know, kind of to know more as we get out there and we're talking to people and be cognizant of how these are taking effect. So, thank you for your report, good report.
Mayor and council, I'd also like to say, the number of chickens, this was a very busy year, and I would say, a lot of them, it wasn't because of the change too. I think there's just a lot of people that all of a sudden had chickens, so I think this would not kind of be the norm, but just be mindful, it was a, normally you don't have seven in a four-month period that come in.
Thank you. Good report, thanks. Next, we have the tree rebates and sales for private land. City Manager Coleman?
Thank you Mayor Slawick. This evening, we are going to review with you our tree rebate program, the Friends of St. Paul and Ramsey County Parks Program, tree sale, and Minnetonka's tree sale. This came up through some discussions earlier in the year about ways that we can try to get ahead of the loss of our ash trees. And I think back earlier this summer, Mr. Funk talked about a program, or I think Councilmember Abrams talked with someone who is familiar with their program. We did get some information on that. And this evening, we're going to, Ginny Gaynor is going to give the report, Mayor. We're really just looking for what you think your preference would be in terms of the type of program that we should have, and then we can get started and give you more detail as we dig into that. But tonight's just an overview of what is our, what are our options, and looking for your preferences, direction to go with this.
Thank you. Ginny Gaynor, welcome to the city council, you're over there, because you're going to have a PowerPoint, I'm thinking, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You have a copy of it in front of you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you Mayor and council members. If we may have the computer, please. As our city manager said, we're going to review two sale programs and one in our city's rebate program tonight. So, let's start with Maplewood's tree rebate program. This program began in 2008, and when we were setting it up, we did a good review of what else was out there, how people were handling this, and we decided to go with a rebate instead of a sale, because we were looking for what we thought would have the least amount of staff time required. So, the way it works is, a resident purchases a tree from a nursery, and because they're going direct to the nursery, the tree will have a warranty, and they get to choose the exact tree and the form of the tree they want, and the size of the tree. Then they would fill out a form, they would submit their receipt in that form to the Maplewood Nature Center, and twice a year during the growing season, we process all of those. We simply review the receipts and prepare the paperwork for finance, and then the finance department processes the checks. So, in the past 10 years of the program, does not include this year, we've gone, we've, 480 trees have been purchased through this program totaling over $70,000, and the city's contribution to that has been almost $30,000. A few details about the rebate are listed there on the side. It's a 50% cost share, up to $100 per tree, with a maximum per household of $200 for trees per year. And it does promote deciduous trees, not evergreens and conifers. So, here's a little detail on the next page to show you, the first couple of years of the program were pretty strong for us, with 96 and 100 in trees those first year, and since then, we've seen a decline. The city just publicizes the program in the April or May City News, and then there's information available at the nature center. Total, so total trees have been 480, and as I mentioned before, those costs were, over $70,000 of trees have been planted through this program. So, a lot of Maplewood residents also take, participate in the Friends of St. Paul and Ramsey County Parks. So, this is not a rebate, this is an actual sale. Typically, the parks offer seven types of trees. People can order online or mail in a check, and there's one day in May, a Saturday morning, where they can pick up their trees. Because this is this type of sale, there's no warranty on the trees, and they, people don't get to pick out their particular tree. I was not able to get any data on this program, but it's also a nice program, because people can donate trees to parks. And a few years ago, they switched up, instead of just donating a tree to a park, you're actually donating cash to a park, which works a lot better for park systems, because then they don't have to go pick up the trees, and we can get the type of tree we want in the location we want it. So, the other sale that people have been interested in is Minnetonka's and how that works. So, residents can purchase up to two trees at the Minnetonka sale. This past year, they offered 17 varieties in number 10-gallon pots, and you can see on the photo that pot size. And because it's this type of sale, there's no warranty on the tree, and you don't get to pick out your particular tree. Residents place their order online in February, and then they can pick it up on a Friday or Saturday morning in May. The cost to residents is $40 per tree. The city pays $40 per tree as well, and they allocate up to $50,000 a year for this program. Since 2007, they have sold 15,000 trees through this program, and last year alone, they sold 800 trees through the program. They work with Tree Trust, who hosts the online payment platform, but the city staff handles everything else, publicity, ordering the trees, accepting trees when they're delivered, and coordinating the pickup for residents. So, in Maplewood, we paid for the program through our tree preservation fund. I want to just give you a little reminder about what that fund is. That fund is funded by payments from developers who cannot meet the requirements of our preservation ordinance. Currently, there's about $55,000 in that fund. Our projected revenue this year is $5,300, and it's, those funds are used to plant trees and to manage our urban forest. There's a couple, besides tree planting, we've got a couple anticipated expenses from the fund. We would like to update the tree inventory, and that's a $15,000 to $20,000 project, and also create a tree plan. I was asked to add a little bit of information on Emerald Ash Bore and where we are with it, because this is part of the impetus for providing trees for private land. So, we have, on our inventory, which was done in 2011, 2,037 public ash trees, that's 21% of our urban forests. And that, once again, is just park and boulevard trees, not natural areas, not private. This past winter, our Public Works crew removed 100 boulevard trees, and we're planting 30 trees this fall. In April of this past year, we did go monitor with the Minnesota Department of Ag, and 24 trees were found with Emerald Ash Bore. I'd say about three-quarters of those were probably on private land. As you might remember, in 2017, the year before, we just had one, maybe two trees with EAB. And then this plant, this coming winter, we're planning to remove at least 100 to 200 So, I was also asked about the EAB spread, how is it spreading, where are we in this? So, the first incidents confirmed in St. Paul was in 2009, and they're typically looking at about an eight-year period where that whole population is building, and then it kind of explodes, and everything is exponential after that. So, St. Paul is in about year 10 or 11 now, and we're so close to St. Paul, and we're not going to, we're not going to have 10 years till we get to that part. We're in that period where everything is going, is really starting, going to go pretty quickly now. So, the discussion for you tonight is, we've got the two models, the tree rebate model, requires minimal staff time. The trees would have a warranty, any size tree is, can be purchased. Resident can ensure the tree has good form before they purchase it, and it can be delivered if they don't want to do a pickup. The tree sale model, on the other hand, has online ordering available, and pickup day can be festive for people. There was, so we're wondering, why were more, why were so many more trees purchased in Minnetonka? Was it the sale versus rebate model? Was it their marketing a promotion? Or was it community culture? I'm not going to try to answer those questions. We'll throw those out there for you to discuss. But when we think about our goal, what is our goal for Maplewood? We want to encourage and support planting of trees on private property, and this would include raising awareness of the value of trees and interest in tree planting, subsidizing the cost of trees, and providing educational support for planting and maintenance. So, with that, I'll take, any questions you may have?
Councilmember Abrams?
Thank you Mayor. I have, I've not participated in the Maplewood tree rebate program. I know some of my neighbors have, and they were very pleased with that. I myself have purchased from the Friends of St. Paul and Ramsey County Parks, which is really kind of fun, because, you're right, it is festive. Everyone goes over and picks up their, I bought shrubs over there, and they were very nice, and they're beautiful now. The concern that I have is that we have so many ash trees, and basically what you're telling us that is, basically, within 10 years, they're all going to be infected. If you look at that chart, or somewhere about 10 years?
So, it's a little more like 15 to 20, 15, because it's really, well, actually, yeah, this chart, and this chart's a few years old now, but yeah, you're really looking at, by year 13, it's like 95% of the trees are gone. But I think we're finding that it's going to be spread out. We, I'm thinking we have at least 10 to 15, even 20 years.
Okay.
But we do know, we have begun removals because of that, because we know we need to get on top of that.
Right, which is great, and I'm glad to see that we're going to be doing more removals this winter. But from a citizen's perspective, this is going to significantly change the look of our neighborhoods. And losing that many ash trees, and knowing that they're going to be coming down, I believe that we need to be a little bit more robust in our response, and I think that the program that, the model that Minnetonka has used, you know, I don't know why they have been, you know, so incredibly successful, 15,000 trees, that's amazing. I believe Minnetonka's probably bigger than we are. I would assume that they're a bigger city than, they're six, okay, so they're considerably bigger than we are. But, you know, the 480 trees that we have done rebates for, to me, is pretty insignificant, considering that we have this, what is going to be an ash armada- Armageddon here in our city. And I guess I'm looking at it and thinking, I'm in favor of doing a tree sale and making that available, and trying that out and see if that works. You know, if after, we can always assess it after one year and say, either this worked or it didn't work. But I think it's, it gives our citizens an opportunity to anticipate their yards are going to look different, and they can take action now with very, you know, by planting a tree and making sure that it is shaded, and it'll be a tree, one of a hardy variety, so that it will be, you know, hopefully, it's going to be disease-resistant, and we will have learned from oak wilt and Dutch elm and now Emerald Ash Bore, that we will plant a whole variety of trees so that we can maybe avoid this problem. But I'm just concerned about what our neighborhoods are going to look like. And we certainly, I mean, that goes to quality of life. We're known as such a green city, and green means a lot of things to a lot of people, but we aren't going to be looking so physically green if we lose all of these trees. And I think that, I'm in favor of trying a, a tree sale this spring. We can assess it. What did it look like? And was this successful? Did we get, you know, more people planting trees? And really recognizing that we have to do something about this. And we can do it now. We're helping our residents do that. I'm just, I'm, I think that is the best alternative. I don't believe that marketing and offering the up to $100 is necessarily going to, you know, even when it was a brand-new program, and no doubt it was marketed like crazy, the most we had was what, still under 100 trees in a year. And so we need to do something a little bit more proactive for our neighborhoods. So I think that this is a good idea. I'd like to try it for a year and see what we can do to anticipate this, a real changing look at our city.
Councilmember Juneman, and then Sean.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think part of the reason for the, should I say, lackadaisical or just not being engaged, is until now, people didn't feel threatened. So much of our development in the 70s and 80s, the tree of choice was the green ash. And so it's kind of, the balloon kind of happened because of when we developed beyond the original city of houses that are the age of mine and older. And so I, I think it's awareness, isn't awareness until it's in your face for most people. And so now that they've been hearing about it in St. Paul, and now that we have it here, and you look through many neighborhoods, one north of me is very clear, creative development wasn't in the picture. Oh, goody, a tree, blonk, make it a green ash. Every single front yard had a green ash tree in it. Hmm, creativity abounded. I think they must have been cheap. So I think part of it is, we haven't had people participating because they didn't feel the need. That's part of it. And so that doesn't change what happens now, but it, I think that explains the past to a point. And it just doesn't, this doesn't really apply to the, to our neighborhoods, but it applies to parks and city land, since we're losing trees as well. I think Jenny will probably remember, I don't know if anyone else remembers, it was probably eight, nine years ago. One of the things that we tried with a couple of different developers, remember when they built the office condos up on County Road D? That was a beautiful piece of property, and it was full of butternut trees. And so the developer made the mistake of saying, when he came for the application, that he had a tree spade. Ding 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 ding. So all of a sudden, in order to get his application approved, he had to use his tree spade. And he transplanted five believable-sized trees that are now in, I think, the park.
Like a C? Did they go?
No. To the park, oh, off of Beam. My mind just drew a blank. East of Walgreens, da 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 da.
Maple Crest?
Maple Crest.
Maple Heights?
Maple Heights, yeah. And they're still there, because I went and checked on them this spring. And we planted them in the worst year ever. It was so freaking hot in September. We thought those trees were going to lie down and go, never mind. But the parks people did a good job of watering when they were planted and watering later in the fall, and they survived. So my point is, I think we need to encourage some of that type of thing for ourselves as an example. We do still have developers coming, and they have some valuable things on their property, and just paying the X number of dollars to take down a significant tree isn't the same thing. It isn't the same thing. And so as we're building this up, we need to be doing it ourselves as a model. We're taking down ash trees because we have to, and there are several of them in many of our parks as well. So let's see how we can be creative and how we can replace trees, which might spark people to want to do the same thing on their own property. I'm not saying have somebody else give them a tree. I'm just saying, that's part of the awareness piece. If we start doing it and focusing on the fact that we did this, because we can see the same thing on our own land, we might be able to get people more sparked to want to be part of something, and sale, rebate, whatever, to make sure that they're doing the same thing. But we need, we need to walk the walk, just as much as we talk the talk. It's the only reason I bring that up. My only hesitation on a sale, and I think we need to do a little more homework maybe, is how much staff time actually goes into it in Minnetaka, and how we would bridge that, because I'm sure they have a bigger staff than we do, and we already have people doing 15 jobs that they thought they were hired to do seven. So I just think we need to feel that out before we say, this is what we're going to do. I think it's a great idea. I just want to see how we can make it work and not become, as so many things do, a money issue. But I think it's worth looking into to try. But I also think we need to encourage it by the way we behave on our parks and public lands.
Good. Councilmember Zhang?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think this is something that I would like to see us move forward with, given how it's impacting the metro area. In terms of the tree removals, or do we have certain neighborhoods that are, like, majority just ash trees?
There are some neighborhoods where we have majority Boulevard ash trees, and we can go in and map those from our, our cartograph mapping system. We do know, from the, the Minnesota Department of Ag is mapping where Emerald Ash Bore confirmed trees are, and that's a really fun one to go and look at, or a really depressing one to go look at, because you can really see the clusters in Maplewood. Right now, in terms of the Emerald Ash Bore existence, there are maybe four neighborhoods that we're really focused on.
And are we working with the Department of Agriculture or the county in how we remove those trees? Because I don't think we're going to go into a neighborhood and just take down all the trees.
No. So for Maplewood, we're just doing Boulevard trees and park trees, and, but we are doing monitoring of any tree, and our monitoring, most of our monitoring is actually done in winter. And then people get a notice that, hey, you've got a tree that's suspect or has Emerald Ash Bore. And the county then is responsible for their own trees, which would include the trees on county roads, county-owned roads.
Thank you.
So a couple of things come to mind. One is that I got a call from a resident last winter whose tree, that they get a card, right, that says their tree's going to be cut down first, and then they mark the, the trees, and then they cut them down. But it's all, it's about a week's period where all that happens. And, yeah. And so, and you knew who it was. And so, and he, he has since passed away, you know, but this, this ash tree was just really important to him. You know, you, you, your kids grow up in a house, and you have these trees, and they become, you know, part of your existence. I remember, Councilmember Zhang, you said that that's one of your favorite things about Maplewood, was trees, right?
Yeah.
And, and so, so that they're going to be cutting all those down, and that I'm sure there'll be a similar process. Did, one question I had was about the stumps. Now, is it the residents' responsibility?
So we took down, ours, our crews took down 100 trees last year, and, and this year, we'll extend the timeframe between when the tree is marked and they get their letter versus when the contractors are out there taking, doing removals. And we contracted with a, we hired a contractor to grind all the stumps, and now we're going to go back and plant this fall. They want to plant the first week of, the planting will be done by a contractor as well, and he wants to do it the first week or so of November.
So how would that interact with this program, then, if we're, we're going to replace all the Boulevard trees?
So, for example, one of, on 30 of the homes that were, that had trees removed last year are on a future street reconstruction project that's going to happen in a couple of years, so we aren't planting for those folks. So one of the women called me, and she was very upset. She wanted to, she didn't want to wait two to three years until the street project to start a tree. And so I told her, hey, you can use our rebate program and just plant the tree one foot inside, inside the Boulevard, and you can get that big shade tree in your front yard to get that screening back, that shade back. So that type of program dovetails, you know, they're, they're separate programs, but that program's always out there for residents to take advantage of.
And so there's, so that would be the rebate program, and then, but we are, we are just replacing those Boulevard trees for no cost?
Yeah. So for the city, whatever we remove, we, we want to replace one-to-one.
Okay.
And it was interesting, because out of the 100 trees we removed, 30 or so were from the neighborhood that's going to be part of street reconstruction. So 70 people got letters, would you like a bou, a new Boulevard tree? And the catch was, they have to do the watering. And only 30 people, only half, wanted Boulevard trees. So to me, that told us, we do need a tree planting campaign. People aren't getting it, they're not seeing it on the landscape, and they're not getting it that we really have to beef up the publicity. Whatever direction we go, we need better publicity. We, you know, we need an actual tree planting campaign to generate some interest and excitement about tree planting.
I think there's still a lot of education that we need to do with our residents, you know, out walking the neighborhoods. We, I would get a lot of questions about, you know, what's going to happen to our trees. And there were, these were neighborhoods, it was an old farm, and they were just ash trees up and down the, you know, and all of those are going to go. And so people, and then some people ask more than other people, and so I hope we continue to put in the newsletter and to talk with residents about that, as well as, the fact that they can get, yeah, if they can get a, a tree one-for-one, that that's part of the thing. I think that the tree program is important, and I was kind of surprised, you know, Oakdale always had like a big Arbor Day thing and tree plantings, and a lot of cities, tree planting is actually a really big thing, right, and has been for a long time. So I think it's an idea that's, time is here, as well as with the Emerald Ash Bore issue. I would like to see, you know, kind of weigh in with what Councilmember Abrams said, and Councilmember Juneman, take the middle of, can we evaluate, do we get more data on what it would cost? I mean, I can see, one, one word I liked was festive, you know, that idea of people coming together around trees is, you do hear, I mean, there are people in Oakdale that would be like, it's Arbor, it's Arbor Day today, I can't do anything else, you know, like, you'll think of other things you're supposed to do with them, and they'll be like, no, I have to do the tree thing. And, you know, it's, it becomes a very important time for the city to pull together. And I think that that could be something in our city that, you know, with our shape and everything else, might be a really good thing for us. But I don't know, you know, City Manager Coleman, what are your thoughts on if we could kind of weigh the rebate program, which we're not sure gets out, that people aren't necessarily using it as much, and get out there, and then with Councilmember Abrams' idea, more towards the Minnetaka program?
Yeah.
And see what might be more feasible. Mr. Funk?
Well, I was going to say a couple of words then, Mr. Funk, because he lives in Minnetaka. But one of the things that I was thinking about is maybe there's some kind of hybrid. And in terms of staffing, I'm thinking maybe if we somehow did it with maybe our drop-off day, where we have public works staff, and we have people there, maybe that, there'd be some opportunity to do that at the same time, because we've got everybody there, and that is sort of festive in a weird way when you're there. It's pretty fun, and people are nice and happy. But, you know, I don't want to also lose the flexibility of the example that Ms. Skater gave about the person who, because of the street project, didn't get a tree, and then could use the rebate program to get a tree in the ground, not having to wait till that's over. So I think we need to maybe do a little more evaluation on the staff resources that are used to do the Minnetaka program, and see how we can maybe be as efficient as we can, but try to keep some flexibility in that, too. I, actually, when I was in the city of North Oaks, we did, we started a tree giveaway program, very similar to Minnetaka's. We did it on one day, and we had people giving demonstrations about how to plant the trees. We made videotapes of it that was run on, on Channel 16, and we really made, it was festive. It was really fun. And the first year, we gave them away for free, and then we started doing a, a cost share like Minnetaka. And we had a lot of people really concerned about that, because North Oaks is highly forested, and people were really concerned about EAB. And it did create a buzz, and people really liked it. I don't know how it's working now, but when I was there, it was quite successful. But it's same deal, there's not a warranty, so then people would get a little bit upset about that. So there, you know, there's give and take on this, but I think the end, the end game is, we want to plant as many trees as we can. So if we, if we might just ask for a little more time to do a little deeper dive in some of the staffing issues, and making sure we understand the cost sharing, and what makes sense for us in terms of what our budget might look like, that kind of thing, we can bring that back.
Councilmember Juneman, and then Abrams?
I just had a thought. If, if in fact, part of it is the cost factor when you talk about staffing and so on, what about focusing on the four neighborhoods where trees are being removed? And so those neighborhoods would be, their radar is going to be higher than other people. So you could do a sale thing with those target neighborhoods, and then move on the next year and so on.
Add.
As a way to start. I mean, it's just a thought.
Interesting idea. Councilmember Abrams?
You know, you were talking about a campaign and about Arbor Day, and I remember Arbor Day, and I remember, this is really going to date me, but I remember Lady Bird Johnson had a campaign. And the campaign was, plant a tree, a bush, or a shrub. And she had that Texas drawl, and it was something that, that was kind of the mantra at school, and we all used to sing that, that little mantra in, with a southern drawl. And we went out, and we planted trees, and everybody planted trees in our yards, and it was, and we, that's what we said, plant a tree, a bush, or a shrub.
Yeah.
And we did it. And it, I like the idea of, I'm certainly open to being flexible. I think we have to be more robust. And I'm not intimidated by the fact that, you know, we do lots and lots of programs. This is a priority. We're going to be losing trees. This is going to have a significant and profound effect on our neighborhoods, on our homes, and, and what our city looks like. And so I would like to see, maybe there's a possibility of doing a partial U-Pick. Is it going to be, you know, and I'm not, I'm talking about citizens, so that if they would prefer a rebate, they could go that route. The rebate, you know, is only, is up to $100. If they purchase their own tree, and I understand there's no warranty, it, you know, you have to water it and take care of it, but it's only $40. And, you know, combined, if they want to get a shrub, you can get shrubs from, from Ramsey County. But I think we really have to look at it as something that we can pull together, and it can be very unifying in our community. And I like that, plant a tree, a bush, or a shrub.
Yeah.
I'm going to hang on to that one.
Good idea.
Okay.
At the legislature, they actually gave out trees every Arbor Day, right?
State Fair gives out little pine trees.
Yeah, and we all planted them, and it was, it was a big deal.
Yeah, I planted them.
So I hope we can use that as an example, and City Manager Coleman come back. And the other thing, I got out there was, somebody had, their ash was below some power lines, and so they wanted a bush, and it's like, man, who do I tell that to? Is, who's our key? So Jenny, okay, so anything like, well, that's right, you wound up with a lot of those questions.
And she was one of the Boulevard tree people.
Yeah. Okay, because that's, things do change over the years.
Can I make a comment? That I would like to see this program, not that we're going to study this for a year.
Right.
This is a tree, okay, a tree program. I'd like to see something, springtime rolls around, we're going to do something in our community where we're going to help start replanting in our community, and do it spring of 2019.
Nice. When is Arbor Day? Anybody remember? Which, May, right?
So we get to pick, we get to pick. So the state will have the month of May. National Arbor Day is typically the month of April. But we actually get to pick, and what we've already talked about for next year, because we've been doing it with the Girl Scouts the last two, three years. We used to have a big celebration at the Nature Center with 100 people would come, and one of our contractors would bring the big tree bucket and give kids rides. But we'd like to do it at Edgerton Park this year, because we've got the community garden projects going in, and we want to plant some fruit trees there. So it's a kind of a nice location to, to really do our Arbor Day tree planting celebration, come out, learn how to plant a tree, and celebrate, celebrate Arbor Day.
Great idea. Good. It's all coming together. Mr. Funk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Just, just a couple of observations, and I want to share with you my experience in living in the city of Minnetaka, since that's one of the models we're looking at. And first off, I just want to go back to something Jenny said here a few minutes ago, and that is just the monitoring program. We do monitor, as Jenny said, in the wintertime, so we do have folks that go out and look at our trees and do, do some inspection, and she can talk a little bit more about what that looks like. But I can tell you that what Minnetaka does is certainly very robust. I mean, in the sense that they hire I mean, in the sense that they hire interns, I think I've shared this with some of our staff, they hire interns in the spring, a handful of them, and they literally comb the city. They are out on foot, walking the city. And so when they do that, they go neighborhood by neighborhood and I can speak to this as a firsthand experience, you come home and you get, you see red Xs on trees with letters that they go on your private property and they're inspecting trees on private property. And so, it is a forced removal, it is a forced tree program, more so than I think in Maplewood, where we're not as quite rigid and forced and deliberative with inspecting and so they are. And so I think that's part of the reason why they have more tree sales is because they're out really canvassing the neighborhoods. And so as a homeowner, and I've had to remove seven of them off of my property, and in my neighborhood that's very wooded, I've had not only myself, but many of my neighbors in the last few years, lots and lots of trees removed, which has sparked the, the tree purchase because you once had a very wooded lot and now it's a bare lot and so now you have a tree program that you like because you, you need, you now want some cover back on your property. So I think that's part of it is too, so we don't want to lose sight of how we inspect and how we, how homeowners are approached, because when you get approached by the city of Minnetonka, again, you, you get your spray painted X on a tree with a letter saying you have thirty days to remove it and if you don't, the city will come do it for you. And so it sparks a whole abatement type process, which is again, much different than what we're talking about.
No, I think we don't want to be that perish crypto.
So I think I wanted to provide some context also into why I think Minnetonka has more tree sales is that they have a different type of pro, not only administered differently, but it's a different type of aggressive program. So again, I wanted to put that a little bit into context.
Thank you. Okay. And thank you.
Yeah, I do, I do want to clarify, for oak wilt, we do, we do that type of inspection. For ash, we do not require a removement, right, removal right now, but for oak wilt, we do.
Councilmember Juneman?
I was just going to say, even with that, I do know people get irate. I mean, even because there's people say, "My neighbor's tree is dead and I have five oak trees." And so, we go in and, and the people who have the diseased tree go, "Get out of my yard." And no, I'm not taking it down. So there is, we'd have to have a policy discussion, pretty deep ahead of time if we're going to get into that. I'm not against that if it's what we want to do, but it's, pardon the pun, has deep roots.
That's a tree jokes tonight. So, okay, thank you, good presentation.
Go lead with that.
So that leads to our last item, I believe. Which is the rental housing licensing discussion. So, City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Slawick, members of the council. Mr. Martin will be giving the report tonight and he's going to update you on the progress and development of the proposed rental licensing program. We will be looking for feedback and direction on the proposed program elements. I think one of the things that I would like you to note, and I'm sure Mike will talk about this, but we, we're just starting and one of the big key pieces as you are interested in is engagement. We need to meet with the rental property owners and have a discussion with them and have education sessions with all of the rental property owners. And we're also scheduled two city council meetings and a public hearing for sometime in spring of next year. And I think Ms. Juneman was here, as was I, when we took a run at this before. And as much as you hear about how this is a needed thing from people when you're out talking to residents, you're going to hear from the owners, a little bit different perspective. And so I think you need to be prepared for the two sides to this and we want, we want to make this happen, we believe it's important, but I just want you to also have your eyes open that it, it can get nasty. So, with that, Mayor, I would like you to call on Mike and I also would point out that Lieutenant Cruddy and Chief Lukin are here. They have been working on this as has Chris and Jason and Chief Nadeau, all working on this together, multi-departments, trying to craft the program and how it works, getting this off the ground next year. So with that, Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll just take a few minutes to walk through our presentation to leave enough time for discussion at the, the end and as Manager Coleman mentioned, I'll give the presentation, but we'll rely on the team that's present here to answer questions depending on where the discussion goes. So quickly, what I'd like to walk through is an overview of the program, areas that we're looking for council direction tonight. Again, review the specific program highlights and then the process for program review and adoption. Manager Coleman teased that out already as well. Management of the program, if we do move forward to adopt and implement such a program and then the required staff to support the program and fees to support that staff. So several items that we'll walk through here quickly tonight. Overview of why are we looking at this, at the direction of the city council, this is before you again, at a workshop, and the several reasons why a licensing program would be beneficial to the city of setting those minimum standards for buildings and equipment used in housing rentals, providing guidance and education to rental property owners. I, I think one component that you'll see run through this presentation is that we often think about the structure of licensing, but there's several components of this program that talks about tenants and tenant rights and, and screening of tenants. So it's, there's a lot of people-based actions here, not just the structure. Ensuring that the owners are properly screening rental applicants and understand the consequences of renting to people who aren't law-abiding and give the two departments that are here, EEDD and Public Safety, another tool to maintain the safety and quality of life for citizens of Maplewood. So who, what would, we, what kind of housing unit would be subject to this program? Any housing unit that would be rented from single-family to a multifamily structure? So anything that's rented would be subject to this program. There would be an inspection that would include, include looking at the facilities and equipment that, to ensure they're at a minimum standard. Like I said, single-family homes would be inspected, so EEDD would look at those single-family structures and any buildings up to four units. The Public Safety and Fire Department would do the physical inspections of buildings with five or more units. So looking at some of the potential needs, if we're going to implement such a program, training for staff, staff additions as well, that we'll talk as we go through this presentation. Rental license application and checklist, the nuts and bolts of running a program, so what the applicant would fill out, what the city would review. We would need to codify these rental housing requirements. A land management system, so software, we'll talk a little bit about in that a couple minutes too. And as I've already mentioned, staffing increases would be required to police, fire, and EEDD. So the few items that we're looking at for the council to provide direction as we continue to build and foster this program, the cost of operating a program, the direction we've been given thus far is to create a cost-neutral program with the fees covering any employee costs and then to look at those staffing proposals and then the program elements. So you'll see items relating to public safety and the structure inspection. So if there's feedback on those three items that we can gather tonight, so as we continue to build this program, that would be helpful for staff. A few more of the program highlights, I touched on this on the overview a little bit, the one to four units by EEDD, we would, additional staffing would be required, but as kind of another step to that program, we'd want to look at creating incentives to increase time between inspections. So if you do have that single-family home, you're renting it out, you're doing everything right, do you have to have an annual inspection? We think you have to have an annual license, but is there a time that for good, good behavior essentially, that you could have a time increase between when you have inspectors come out? For those five or more units inspected by the fire department, they would look at inspecting about ten percent of the units per building annually. They would look at all common areas as they do now on an annual basis, but it's actually going a step further and looking at ten percent of those units. And the applicant or the landlord essentially, would not necessarily know which ten percent they were looking at going into, it'd be by the fire department's selection. And then continued outreach and education. Manager Coleman talked about the upfront outreach that we're planning to do, but our internal discussions with Public Safety and EEDD, we've talked about the need to continue that type of outreach because there would be new landlords, new homeowners that would be renting and so we want to create a quarterly topical meeting that EEDD and Public Safety would coordinate on different topic areas about how to rent apartments or housing units in Maplewood and kind of keep that, keep that as a consistent dialogue between landlords and property owners and the city. I'll go over this slide, but again, if there's questions about the public safety considerations, I'd lean on our public safety staff that's here tonight if there's questions from the council. But this program would look at when a unit is rented, the owner would be required to conduct a background check to have on file on any potential renter. A lease would be required for every rental, that is not required currently in Maplewood. Require a drug-free, crime-free addendum to the lease. Ensure housing's an acceptable level regarding safety, security, functionality, and quality of life for residents and neighbors. And allows enforcement options for owners not keeping up to the standards set by the city regarding both the physical quality of life and crime and drug-free places to live. We did bring this to the Housing and Economic Development Commission, it's kind of our first step at public engagement and outreach, looking internally to our own commission that deals with housing issues. They were informed also that we would come back at least once more in early 2019 to continue this dialogue as the program evolves and builds, but they did have some initial questions wanting to know more about the benefits of, of a program. The costs, would there be duplications of efforts between other entities that do inspections, inspections that we're already doing, those type of issues? What new tools would truly be provided that we don't have today? What is that gap needing to be filled? And then there, there was an interesting conversation about the timing of implementing such a program and wanting to make sure that, especially for those like single-family homeowners that are renting, that there would be plenty of time for them to get educated and aware to apply for a license, that they're not, we're not as a city rushing into a program and then requiring those property owners to then rush to get licensed as well. So this will lead to a series of informational meetings that we're looking to hold in the first quarter of 2019. That's where Manager Coleman talked about starting that dialogue with property owners and land, landlords. We also probably want to figure out how we can engage renters because they're a component of this. So we, we're looking at a number of meetings, not an overwhelming number, but several meetings, more than one essentially, so that we can kind of cover the bases and make sure that people can come at different times of the day and different times of the week. And then after that, assuming we're still moving forward, we'd create the required ordinances and program guidelines and policies and start to codify these requirements and that would lead to two, at least two council meetings, including a public hearing in the spring of 2019. So how a program would be managed, once those ordinances are adopted, we would start to look as a city staff to add additional staff members and start turning them and implementation of the program would commence. We would need a software program to manage the license program. Fortunately, between several departments, we've been working on a new land management software that the council approved already, so that, that software is able to take on a program like this. So we would need to build up another module essentially to manage rental housing licensing. So, we're looking this fall to have building permits and licensing operational. So once we kind of get that up and running and that's all running smoothly, then we could start to move on to building a rental housing licensing module for this program. The program would be administered by EEDD, but with strong coordination with fire administrative, administrative staff in terms of scheduling the inspections and who sends the notices out and those kind of details. And we do want to point out that not all units can be inspected in year one. When you think of all housing units, it will have to be a phased approach. So looking at that staffing, for EEDD, we're looking to potentially hire one full-time inspector. Their, their charge would be single-family, duplex, triplex, and fourplex buildings. And then they could also provide some support for our code enforcement efforts on our community development side. We currently in EEDD have an unfilled part-time admin assistant position that we would look to make a full-time position for the administrative tasks related to this program. On the public safety side, they're looking to upgrade the current contract position of a fire marshal to a full-time position to create a battalion chief of inspections and that fire marshal, those fire marshal duties. And then upgrade the current part-time fire department administrative position also to a full-time position. And then the police department would also have the request of a full-time enforcement officer to manage the crime-free, drug-free program. I know the police chief has talked a lot about managing and developing relationships with the neighborhood and this would be a program that could help foster that with the right dedication of staff to do so. So closing up here on the, the quick overview of what we're looking at, the, the fee structures that we're looking at, again, keep it in mind that we've been tasked to keep this cost-neutral in terms of the budget eventually, meaning that the program would pay for itself or sustain itself. The fees being considered at this point, the, the range of fees that we're looking at are within what we're seeing throughout the metro, but truthfully would be higher than average. It is somewhat difficult though, to directly compare city to city. I've had conversations with inspection managers and community, community development directors from around the metro and if you try to untangle why their budgets are the way they are, like it's, it's not comparable to how we are today. So it's, you got to kind of keep that in mind when you're looking, it's not always apples to apples. And then the ranges that we're looking at, there would be regardless, if it's, regardless if it's one unit or two hundred units, you'd have a structure line, license fee of a hundred to three hundred dollars and then you'd get charged per unit, anything above one, somewhere in the range of thirty to sixty dollars for each additional unit within the structure. So again, for a single-family home, you could be looking at a fee of anywhere from a hundred to three hundred, depending on where we land, but then when you look at a larger building, just picking on the one that happened to recently open, you would be looking at anywhere from four to five thousand dollars. We would have inspections, those fees, you'd have thirty days to register. If you didn't, there would be potential penalty fees after thirty days. So again, just showing a range of two fifty to seven fifty. So again, because we, we need to make sure that there's enough of a stick to make sure that people stick with the program and are registered and renewing on time. And then also because the initial fees are paying for our first trip out there, but if there's violations and the cause or need for staff to make several trips, we want to make sure those costs are assumed as well. So you can see, we get, as proposed, we're giving the first one free, but if you have to come out second or the, one more time, three more times, you could be fined anywhere from, or see additional fee of anywhere from two hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars depending on the number of revisits. So with that, that was a quick overview. Again, I wanted to make sure that we had enough time tonight for discussion and feedback from the council. And with that, staff can stand for any questions.
Councilmember Juneman. Good report, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Well, first of all, you know, having the owner slash license holder do the background check, if you start back at the beginning, based on a couple of incidents I know of in neighborhoods, want my own for one, and then some of the things you read in the paper from St. Paul, if it's a troublesome building, whether it's a house or a forty-five unit apartment building or whatever, how do you get at the background of the person who owns the place? Because there have been some in St. Paul where the repeated inspections don't seem to bother anyone until somebody says, "All right, close it down, everybody's out of here." And then you look into it and this has been happening, they've traveled from city to city doing this and here they are in your city.
Sometimes they're called slumlords.
Yes. Yahoo! I mean, you know, how do you get at that and what do you do about it? And there's also, it's more likely in the suburbs, what we have is quasi-slumlords, I guess you would say, people who have enough time off from their own positions and enough income to buy houses in any number of suburbs and then they run them all into the ground. We had one in our neighborhood like that and he had four in Maplewood and seven in Roseville and he spread the wealth. And because we had no stick, we decided to beat him ourselves with rocks in our neighborhood and we just went after him and drove him out, literally, by saying, "Our neighborhood doesn't do this." And it was because of what the people were having to live with. It wasn't even so much the rest of us as what was happening to the structure. And he wouldn't do anything about it. Neighbors would come knocking at our door at ten o'clock at night, people with little kids and they don't have a furnace. And they called them and he went, "Tough luck." I mean, so how do you get at that and then what, I mean, that has to be built into this somehow. And if it's somebody with a history of doing that, I think the stick needs to be a different size or have a bigger rock on the end of it or something, because otherwise that spreads. And then, my second question is, when you say not all units can be inspected in one year, would a good starting place be, let's face it, we have some known trouble spots, buildings that are never kept up and so the people that live there are always without. Would that be a starting place? It's just a question mainly. But the other piece, I just don't know how you get at it, but I think it needs to be considered as part of the whole thing.
I think that's a good point. I think those are good points. Uh, Mr. Martin, city manager Coleman, any feedback on the sort of slum word or the unresponsive landlord?
Sure. Well, mayor and council, my first thought is that, you know, when we have, uh, individuals that look, not everyone, but some people there are looking to buy a single-family home will often call our office and asking for any violations or permits that have been pulled. Well, we'd start with this program to create a database of violations that people then could potentially look at. Uh, I don't want to overpromise without knowing what a program or software would look like yet, but potentially maybe there could be down the road of someone being able to do a lot of that research online, uh, to see if there had been violations in a particular building or a property. Uh, so we will be creating kind of a, a background data internally as a city, uh, that could somewhat start to serve as that. Uh, and then as far as, you know, where to start, you know, we could start looking at, is there geographic areas we start? Or if you're saying, we'll start if you're south of ninety-four or you've had, uh, a code visit from Chris, uh, within the last year, something like that. Those are details we could start to look at.
Mr., Mr. Swanson?
Mayor and council, I can talk directly to the, I guess, known offenders, known problem people. At this point, we have a pretty good knowledge of who those are and specifically who the landlords are. So over the course of many years, we've had new people who've come over, started renting those properties. We do a pretty good job of being able to track those people down. The internet is an amazing and powerful tool. I can tell you ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, if there's a problem property, even if it's an LLC or some sort of out-of-state person, we can normally find contact information for that. Um, and that's been very helpful in terms of ensuring that if there is a problem, if, you know, say four PM on a Friday, the furnace isn't working, that we can get ahold of somebody and make sure that somebody is able to get out there and actually address that issue. So we have a lot of that knowledge, um, within our system already and we're very good at finding that information.
Councilmember Juneman?
As a matter of fact, we should, I should give congratulations to Chris. He was in one on our neighborhood that was part of a, um, shall we say, crime issue not too long ago. And the house was also, it was unbelievable. And, um, it's being cleaned up now and it's, they're actually, actually redoing the outside. It's starting to look like a house. So he knows of what he speaks.
Yes. Yeah. Then there's, and this would, it does put those levers in place to improve these places. We'll go council member, uh, Zhang and then Abrams?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, so looking at the cost of operating programs, um, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, creating, looking at the term creating cost-neutral program fees. So is that something that we're looking to have like, uh, fees that would help fund operational costs?
Mr. Martin?
Mayor and council, uh, the charge that we've been given thus far is that, yeah, any additional cost that the city would occur to operate and implement, uh, and manage this program would be offset by the fees it would generate.
Okay. So I, I imagine there would be costs in like implement, in setting up the software, the system that's going to be employed?
Yep, correct. Uh, and I believe mayor and council that, uh, as you've done, uh, gone through your budgeting process, that the finance director, uh, Paul Seth has talked about, you know, year one might not be fully, uh, cost-neutral. So she's working to build in some of those buffers so that, uh, we are able to implement the program and incur costs to do so.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, I have another questions in terms of the, sort of the, uh, structure, structure of the, or the public safety elements of it, um, in terms of like the drug-free, uh, contract or agreement that is signed in place. You know, what, what sort of enforcement options do we have that, that you can help?
Mr. Martin?
Provide us with?
Sure.
What it might look like?
Yeah. Mayor and council, I don't know if, uh, Lieutenant Crati had some additional comments on the public safety, uh, considerations, but, uh, I'm not su, I don't know offhand if, you know, how we're thinking yet, um, those steps of enforcement, but perhaps the police department.
Lieutenant Crati, and I, you know, one thing I was wondering is.
Here's a big stick.
Yeah. Like the public nuisance fees. So the more, you know, they, that they, do they get cumulative, the worse they get and what's being proposed?
Well, mayor and council, what it would include is just making all of the tenants sign a drug-free, crime-free addendum to their lease, meaning if they violate that, then the owner landlord has yet another reason to get rid of them. Um, it doesn't really do a cumulative effect, but if the landlords are not having people sign it, it's a strike against their rental license.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Would that be done for, um, what about places like group homes, transitional homes, so we're home, so we're homes, obviously you hope are crime-free, but I-
I don't think that's where, mayor and council, I don't think that's what we're looking at right now. It's-
Mostly the rental units. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Abrams?
Thank you. I think that this is a really important discussion for our community and I can see where there will be some sticking points because these are significant, um, fines and there are significant consequences. Uh, what I'd see on the other side is the fact that we do have some problem properties in our city and we have some, uh, rental units that are not safe for families and for kids. And my concern is we don't know what we don't know. And I think that there's more out there that, uh, really is a concern for me. And so I, I really am encouraged that we're going through this. Uh, this staffing model, is this similar to what Chief Nadeau presented to us? Because he talked about this as being really cost-neutral and I think that we're all interested in that, that we want the program to be self-sustaining and to pay for itself so that we can then have that monitor out there in the community and ensuring that our rental units are safe, that they meet minimum standards and, and that, you know, I, I think that that will go a long way to helping us. And I think it'll be great, I would assume that the police would be very, um, welcome, uh, to have this type of a tool in our toolbox that we can monitor and manage some of these problems and short-circuit them before we get, you know, these habitual repeat offenders, that this really is a tool that we can use. And so I'm encouraged. Uh, I think we need to keep moving forward with it. Uh, and I, I too, I like that idea that this is going to be cost-neutral, but I think if we can get through this, the ultimate outcome is going to be very good for our city. It'll be very positive. I think it will help relieve some of the repeat problems that we have out there because there will be consequences. And we all know that there are consequences in life and, uh, we want to make sure that we're protecting the most vulnerable that we have out there. And this is, I think, going to be a good program for us to do that.
So it's good to hear. I think everybody is encouraged by this process. I know it's not going to be easy as it goes forward, but again, for quality of life for our residents, it is really important. And we know in the, uh, some of our rental properties right now, some of the landlords aren't responding to broken toilets, broken furnaces, those types of things. We know, um, there are drug issues. We know there are crime issues. And so by now incorporating this into all the, um, leases, I think it's going to go a long way, uh, to, uh, making sure that all our families are safe. And I, I see the school superintendents here and that our school, that our children are safe, um, and that they're coming to school and going home, uh, from a place that's, uh, go home to a place that is crime-free and drug-free. Uh, with that, city manager Coleman, what do you see as next steps? Mr. Martin, nice job.
Yeah. Um, I think we'll continue to, uh, look into the actual costs of implementation to make sure that we set the, uh, fees accordingly. We don't want to make money on this. We just want to make sure that it's cost-neutral. And that is, you know, that's tied to our strategic plan. And I have to give credit to the council, the mayor and the council for, for thinking about the future of our community. And this is going to be, I think, a really big change for our community for the better. And I, I, I think it's going to take some courage, which you guys aren't afraid to take, take some hard steps, make some hard decisions. I think this is going to get a little tough, but I think we have to keep the end game in our sights. And we want to have safe housing for our folks. And I think it's really going to help the police department and our code enforcement team. I think it's just all going to come together to really make this a better community.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And then thank you, um, to the staff for taking it seriously and to Chief Nadeau. But, uh, you know, at the beginning of the summer, well, when walking the neighborhoods, you know, there are some very serious, just single-home problems out there of people renting. And that happened in, in my neighborhood in South Maplewood. The people next door got divorced. They rented out the home and frequently there were different people in there and we never know who they were. And they weren't signing anything with the city. So there was really no regulation. So, um, I, I appreciate the, the warning too, because I suppose some of the fees, when you look at the large ones for the large apartments is where we're going to hear about, uh, the issues.
I think when you, when you do the math on that, it's not as big an impact as you might think. You know, when you do, when you run the numbers, it's, you know, under fifty dollars a unit for, for a year. Right. And we need to get people's attention and make sure, make sure they know we're serious about this.
Okay. Good, good presentation. Thanks to everybody, the police department, fire department, code enforcement, uh, planning economic development, E two D two, and to the management for, uh, making this happen. With that, we are going to end the workshop and we will reconvene at seven o'clock.